Here.
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 Alderman, person Marshall is it? Alderman?
Here.
And Alderman Husky?
Great. Uh, just item of housekeeping before we start. I will maintain my vote for the District Five voters tonight, even though I chair the meeting. So with that said, uh, we're gonna have a, uh, special event here tonight. Cup's called PAC 251 is gonna perform an opening flag ceremony.
Agents, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you all. We'll move on then with item number three then is the approval of minutes from the meeting of September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Comments, corrections, or additions, amendments, those meeting minutes, otherwise we'll take a motion on that.
Clark moves to approve the minutes of nine twenty twenty-two.
Second. Great, roll call.
Alderman Lorg.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirk Housky.
Aye.
Great, uh, we'll move on to item number four, some recognition, Merrell proclamation, white cane safety day, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Catherine, please read that into the record.
Certainly, white cane safety day, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas white cane safety day is a national observance in the United States, celebrated annually on October fifteenth of each year since nineteen sixty-four. And whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately a hundred thousand Wisconsin residents. And whereas the majority of these persons use travel aids such as a white cane or a white service animal to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation. And whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss. And whereas Wisconsin's white cane law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than ten feet of a pedestrian who is using a white cane or service animal. Whereas careful driving and fully stopping when pedestrians are in the crosswalk is beneficial to all residents, including children, elders, and people with disability. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel Bukavich, mayor of the city of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as white cane safety day in Oak Creek and hereby also acknowledge the importance of pedestrian safety year round, dated this fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Catherine. There's no motion on that, so we'll take item number five on Merrell proclamation. Pregnancy and infant loss awareness day, October fifteen, two thousand twenty-two.
Declaring October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day in the city of Oak Creek, Wisconsin. Whereas pregnancy is a time of excitement and anticipation for parents as they prepare for the arrival of a new baby. And whereas sadly thousands of families within the United States are affected by pregnancy and infant loss each year, presenting them with a unique and tragic type of grief. And whereas Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day serves to promote awareness, remembrance, and support of the families whose lives are revocably altered as a result of the death of a child during pregnancy at birth or in infancy. And whereas Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness is critical to helping families receive support and increases educational and prevention efforts. And whereas Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day calls attention to the need to recognize grief and to honor and remember the babies who have passed away to miss, due to miscarriage, stillbirth, neonatal death, and other causes of infant loss. And whereas Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day is recognized each year on October fifteenth with the international wave of light where families, friends, loved ones, and supporting organizations light a candle in the memory of babies gone too soon. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, mayor for the city of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day in the city of Oak Creek, Wisconsin, dated this fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone, any comments? Otherwise, you just obviously, great causes, we appreciate the, those who took the time to bring those motions forward and their advocacy for those causes. So, um, we're gonna give, uh, moment here for PAC two fifty-one to exit the building, so to speak. We appreciate your time. Thank you. I can get off the checkbook. Is ready? All right, moving on, new business. Item number six, presentation of the two thousand twenty-three executive draft operating and capital improvement projects budget.
Thank you, President Gail. Um, so while Max is getting loaded up here with our presentation, I wanted to just provide some introductory comments as this process is a little bit newer, new for us, uh, this year as it, uh, as in years past, at least since it, since we've, I've been doing budgets here, uh, with this council. Uh, this year we're really early on in providing this general overview presentation and what we thought we would do is provide a baseline education level on the ideas and strategies and really the financial plan that this budget represents, this twenty twenty-three budget, uh, in advance of your first budget workshop. Typically, we would give this budget or this, this overview presentation for the first hour, give or take of the budget workshop and what we wanted to do was provide that to you in advance of that budget workshop. Get on a common operating picture, uh, at least understand what's in the budget and how we got this thing to balance and some of the spending priorities, again, i.e. the financial plan. Um, and then you can think about that for a few days as we head into our budget workshop as a group on Friday and, and then we'll get right into deliberating and, and talking about the merits of those proposals. So, uh, council can, can take this how they wish tonight and spend as much time, uh, as you choose, but really we, we weren't anticipating budgetary debate, if you will, but making sure you knew exactly what was in the proposal, uh, and then give you some time to think about that. In addition, we are also early, uh, on in providing you all of the, the narratives and the activity measures and a lot of the, uh, education that goes along with our comprehensive budget document, which we typically just show the numbers, lots of spreadsheets, lots of green spreadsheets, along with the letter of transmittal. This year we are going to provide for you all of the narratives and probably ninety percent of what would go into that, uh, ultimate budget document and, and at the end of the year that we actually do, uh, submit to the government finance, government finance officers association for credentialing for, uh, our budget presentation. Um, really the letter of transmittal, which was included in your packet and this brief presentation we'll go through, really kinda goes through that letter of transmittal. We use our budget document here as a communication device and as a financial plan. And one of the benefits we have of giving this presentation early on in the budget process, at a, in a public setting at this council meeting, is, is really twofold. Number one, it continues our, uh, commitment to transparency and we really wanna educate the public on all the things that you elected representatives grapple with every year, uh, levy limits and, and revenue, shared revenue loss and, you know, all of the other variables affecting the budget that you don't necessarily control and then the things that you do control. Secondly, and equally importantly, though, uh, reviewing the employee survey from this past summer, we really want our workforce to come at this organization and come to work for this organization with a common operating and financial picture as well. Uh, so with that, we will be able to share this videotape and, and, and share with, uh, the staff, the, the letter of transmittal and the decision points for the council. And ultimately, after a brief presentation that, that gives this overview of this budget document, um, the negative impacts of the state and revenue losses and all of the, the wins and minuses we had to balance out, uh, we'll get to some council, uh, decision points. These decision points are actually, uh, more robust, I would say, than in past years, but they're almost entirely specific to capital projects and funding strategies, not related to general property in tax, not, general property taxes, not related to the general fund. Uh, as council is aware, we've, we've really been working on prioritizing the twenty twenty-three budget for several months because we took a look surgically at several groups of employees, our workforce, several groups, uh, and made some significant investments last year, given a lot of issues and reasons, uh, it made a significant investment, investment in wages, which we had to then afford in this following budget. So there's not a ton, uh, that we can offer you in terms of flexibility in the general fund at this point. We've proposed a balanced budget. Uh, we do have some wins in that, uh, general fund budget, uh, namely for, you know, you know, the next operating year and obviously this is our goal every year, there's no service reduction for our residents. Actually, there's some enhancements, uh, as you'll see as we go through that presentation. So, uh, that's our goal tonight, a common education and understanding and, and operating framework for you to head into the budget workshop on Friday, uh, prepared with your own questions or, or thoughts or alternatives, uh, and we'll go from there and jump right into it on Friday morning. With that.
Great. Uh, thank you, City Administrator Vickers, Max Gigan, City Administrator and Controller. So, uh, really the four items we're gonna talk today is just a high-level overview of the property tax levy, uh, where things ended up and our major funds. I'll look at human resource enhancements included in the budget proposal, uh, do a cursory review of the twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan, and then talk about those common council discussion and decision points. And again, more for educational awareness tonight and then we'll have those more robust conversations on Friday. So looking at property tax levy, uh, and how it's distributed by fund, uh, so the general fund is the city's largest fund, uh, about twenty-nine million dollars and you'll see its levy, uh, proposed for twenty twenty-three is about sixteen point five million, sixteen point six million. Um, then you can see the overall levy is about twenty-three point eight million. Uh, so that levy is going up five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, about two point five percent. And that's the amount that we can increase the levy per state statute. That's our net new construction factor was two point five percent. Uh, but what you'll see is that, that levy amount does vary, uh, depending on the funds. So some are over, some are, are less. So you'll see the general fund at five percent, consolidated dispatch fund closer to twelve percent. And again, uh, as Andrew mentioned, you know, those funds had some pretty significant investment and compensation adjustments, uh, DPW personnel, dispatch personnel. So that's why you're seeing a higher levy need for those funds. Uh, and then you'll see some reductions as well, the largest being the debt service. So, uh, that was really, uh, due to the decision of the common council last year. You know, one of our decision points was our multi-year debt levy strategy and trying to reduce that, uh, build some resiliency in the operating budget. So, um, we were able to shift about three hundred ten thousand dollars in levy from the debt service fund over to the operating budget. You know, quite frankly, if we didn't adopt that strategy last year, I don't know how we'd have the budget we do today. Uh, it would've been very challenging. And then you'll also see a reduction in the levy for the EMS fund. And again, this isn't a testament to a decrease in programs and services, but really just levy needs. So when you look at that fund, you're seeing ambulance revenues increasing significantly. We, our grant from Milwaukee County went up about fifty, sixty thousand dollars. We get, uh, fire do aid, fire dues aid, which is based off equalized value, which continues to grow. So we're seeing a levy reduction in the EMS fund, but again, it's not, it's not a barometer for the, the level of programs and services. Those are staying the same. It's more so just less levy need as other. So this chart just shows the property tax levy by funds, so taking, uh, the last numbers and depicting it on a pie chart. And really what you'll see is, uh, you know, the thing that really stands out to me is that only two percent of our levy goes to debt service, which is pretty unusual. What you most commonly see in Wisconsin municipalities, they spend about ten to twenty-five percent of their levy on debt service. So they'll often issue a lot of debt to fund their capital improvement program and service that debt through the levy and a debt levy exemption, uh, where you need and that most of our capital improvement programs paid for other funding sources. So, uh, and in fact, this year, our twenty million dollar capital improvement plan doesn't use one tax dollar to fund it. One general tax. Pretty impressive. Looking at our general fund revenues, so general fund revenues, what I highlight here are just the major variances that are really changing from our twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, so you'll see that, uh, overall revenues increasing seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. You'll see the property tax levy increasing seven hundred and ninety-two thousand. So if you think about it, about ninety-nine point five percent of all the revenues really coming from that tax levy. Uh, you do see some reductions in, in some of the state shared revenue. Our general transportation aids reduced ten percent, uh, results of our decrease, significant decrease in our six-year spending average on roads. Um, and then a reduction in our expenditure restraint payment, about ten percent as well. Uh, you do see some development-related fees, interest earnings that are offsetting some of those state shared revenue losses, as well as some other items. Uh, and most of those aren't fee increases, they're really just looking at the historical activity, made some adjustments to really overcome those state shared revenue losses. But, uh, the increased activity is really offsetting the state shared revenue loss and at the end of the day, it's really the property tax levy that's pretty much what the total revenue increases. So looking at general fund revenues by category, you'll see on the pie chart, uh, of the general fund, sixty-one percent is property taxes. And again, uh, we do have restrictions on how we can levy property taxes only for operating expenses unless we do an exception, uh, to go above and beyond net new construction. Our next largest revenue source, state shared revenue, nineteen percent. Again, that amount is dictated by the state. Third largest revenue source is other taxes and it's really two large components, uh, the first being the water utilities payment lieu taxes, so a tax equivalent to the city. Uh, again, that's regulated by the Public Service Commission, that's about one point eight million dollars. And then hotel and motel taxes, uh, again, that's regulated by the state and how much the city can retain, uh, and that's dictated by Act fifty-five passed in twenty fifteen. So all said and done, uh, when you add it up, uh, ninety-one percent of the revenues are really outside of the local. That makes balancing a budget very challenging in some years in that, but we can really only effectuate nine percent of the revenues, uh, by local decisions. So just something that I think the general public can, needs to be aware of is that you're trying to balance a budget and you can only effectuate nine percent of your revenues, it makes it really challenging. And conversely, we see that with expenditures as well. Looking at our general fund expenditures, uh, you can see where they lie by category. You know, if you look at our direct and indirect employee costs, it's about eight hundred fifty thousand of the nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase we're proposing, uh, that's ninety-one percent of all new dollars in this budget. Ninety-one percent of all new dollars in this budget are going towards our investment in human capital, which is pretty significant. And that's even more impressive considering the inflationary increases we're seeing in things like utilities, supplies, commodities, contracts. And to be able to hold that part of it to only nine percent of the total increase is fairly impressive. So again, you'll see overall increase about three point five percent, which is at nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then looking at our general fund expenditures by category, uh, in the pie chart, you'll see seventy-five percent of our costs are human capital, are personal costs, municipal operations, very human resource intensive, uh, both public safety, public works, parks of recreation, uh, just a lot of human capital. Uh, the next largest would be our other services and this is more of our contractual-type services. So for example, this is where our payment to the school district for the recreation program falls. Uh, you'll see some of our commodities, uh, you know, salt purchases, things of that nature. Uh, and then you see the smaller parts, utilities, supplies, maintenance vehicles. So, you know, at the end of the day, there's ninety-one percent of your revenues that you have very little influence on and then seventy-five percent of your costs are relatively fixed, you know, if you're providing a modest cost of living adjustment. So when you have budgetary challenges, trying to have revenues sufficient to meet those expenditures becomes a real challenge because there's really very minor parts of both the revenue and expense budget you can effectuate unless you're making decisions about reducing programs and services or having adjustments in your staff. So this next chart is just showing general fund expenditures by department. Just wanted to show, uh, the common council what departments are seeing either increases or decreases, uh, more than what we would expect and kinda why. So just a few that are highlighted, you'll see, uh, the city manager, or city administrator's office increased about fourteen percent. Uh, we did, uh, include in this budget proposal a part-time social media and marketing position, so that was a significant part of that. Um, and that position would be split between general fund and then fifty percent tourism fund as well. Uh, additionally, if you go down, you'll see IT is actually showing a very small decrease and, uh, what that primarily is, is that all of the dispatch-related software costs we had, uh, we realized some of it was allocated to the general fund, some of it to the dispatch fund. And as we're moving, uh, into the next round of negotiations for our contract, we really just wanted to right-size that. So we shifted a lot of software costs that was for dispatch, moved it to the dispatch fund where it really should be accounted for. Uh, you'll see, uh, also a large decrease in the treasurer budget, uh, and that's due to the elimination of the deputy treasurer position in this budget. You'll see increases in admin support services primarily due to the compensation adjustments approved in May. And looking at the next slide, you'll see, uh, some larger variances with the public works. You'll see seven point six percent all the way up to ten percent. So again, you know, two hundred and thousand-plus-dollar investment with those compensation adjustments, uh, in June of this year. Uh, and then you'll see recreation about sixteen point seven percent. Uh, one of the things we did is just kind of reorganized how the recreation budget works. Uh, we had a bunch of the leisure service assistant time being charged to other budgets because she's still managing the facility rental program, which is really under recreation. We just shifted that from one budget to the next. Um, but again, overall, you'll see, uh, our budgetary increase for the general fund, about nine hundred thirty-five thousand. So now going to our, our other major funds, uh, won't speak too much to solid waste fund, uh, really not much adjustments. You'll see our employee costs going up about twelve percent. Again, those are the compensation adjustments, uh, that we realize or that we approved earlier in the year. And then you'll see sale of recyclables actually coming up as well, so that recycling markets really bounce back as well. And our refuge recycling contract is the council is aware, we really didn't know where that was this time last year and then we got very favorable. So we budgeted that at the maximum amount, which is the twenty twenty-four amount, uh, so we didn't have to budget any increases for the year. So overall, funds going up about one point six percent. Uh, next, looking at our EMS fund, uh, as I alluded to earlier, you can see those revenue increases, uh, the property tax levy going down about ninety-four thousand, but you'll see fire dues, about fourteen thousand dollar increase, our grant from Milwaukee County for ALS service going up about fifty-two thousand dollars and then about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for ambulance revenues. Again, that's based off of actual experience, uh, fairly conservative, uh, revenue protection. Uh, you'll see on the expenditure side, direct costs going up about two and a half percent, uh, which is about what we would expect given our contractual arrangements for cost of living adjustments. But I think one of the things you'll notice here and that was mentioned in the letter of transmittal is that, uh, we're proposing to fund the purchase of an ambulance, uh, from the EMS fund, three hundred eighty thousand dollars. Um, so that does bring this budget up quite a bit and we would be utilizing some of the fund balance, so the reserves that we have in the fund, uh, to pay for that. And if you look at the bottom of this, you can see where the reserve position is. So we're estimating by the end of this year, we'll have about one point seven six million in reserves in that EMS fund, which equates to about thirty-one, thirty-two percent of all operating costs. So that's higher than our policy thresholds and, uh, if we utilize the three hundred eighty thousand dollars for the ambulance purchase, that would bring our reserves down to about one point three eight million dollars, which is still twenty-four percent, which is still very much at the top of our threshold, gives you about three months of operating expenses in your rainy day fund. So, uh, we feel very, very good recommending that we proceed with this direction, uh, given that it won't have a material impact on that reserve. And then our consolidated dispatch fund, uh, you'll see that significant levy increase, uh, twelve percent. Uh, and then you'll also see minor adjustments for our contract with St. Francis. And you'll see on the direct employee costs about thirteen point six percent. And then all other items, you see it shows about a thirty-seven percent increase. Again, we shifted a lot of software costs out of the general fund, moved it into this budget to right-size it. Uh, but one of the things you'll also see here is that, uh, it is utilizing a hundred thousand dollars in fund balance to make this work. And, uh, when we presented the compensation adjustments for dispatch to the common council in May, and one of the things that we made the group aware of is we're really trying to fund this over a two- to three-year period until we can get to that next contract, uh, where we'll be on renegotiated terms that would be more favorable to Oak Creek. Um, so what this is doing is putting this budget really in a position that, um, once we get to twenty-four and then twenty-five, should have everything right-sized. So we are using reserves in this position, uh, to make an amount of a hundred thousand dollars. So next, uh, we'll just talk through the human resource enhancements included in the twenty twenty-three executive draft budget. Uh, so first and foremost, it does include cost of living adjustments for both our collective, uh, bargaining personnel as well as non-represented personnel. Uh, both our police and fire unions have collective bargaining agreements that have a two percent wage adjustment for next year, uh, on January first of next year at one percent and then July first, uh, split midway through the year. Uh, we also did include a two and a half percent annual wage adjustment effective January first of the year for all of the other part-time and full-time city employees. Uh, and then third, we did include an additional one-time payment for police and fire union employees to compensate for that half percent difference, uh, and that's on a non-base building basis, so it's a one-time payment. Uh, we still have to work through the mechanics of how that would work, but, um, again, trying to get to the, the, uh, pay equity, you know, everyone is having the same pay adjustment for twenty twenty-two.
A little brief history on that. So, uh, post-two thousand and ten, there was a period of years where inflation was very low, collective bargaining rights were different for different groups of employees for the first time. Uh, and we had years where non-represented employees got, uh, received much lower cost of living adjustments, even nothing, uh, and we had public safety collective bargaining uh, out there at a, at a reasonable, uh, wage rate. And, um, that caused a lot of consternation in the organization. And that caused a lot of consternation in the organization. That's something I heard very loud and clear, a legacy of that, and something we've tried to clean up. And it may not always work, given levy limits and the condition of any given budget or loss of shared revenue. One thing we've done since twenty seventeen budget, I think that was my first one. We've tried to normalize the cost of living for everybody in the organization. And the one time payment to police and fire bargaining, you know, bargaining, bargaining employees, represented employees is something unique. And we'll have to discuss the merit of that a little bit more than I am right now. But certainly, we've accommodated the ability to do that, to have a standard value proposition next year of two and a half percent to all of our workforce, part time and full time. And as you know, that's kind of, you know, in addition to or part and parcel of large wage adjustments we made for certain groups of employees last year, DPW, dispatch, ASA's, custodial staff, and a few here and there addressed in the management ranks in this budget. But it's something that's really important for me. We went kind of back and forth on what this would look like, and we just don't know yet. And we don't, we're not smart enough, but we have accommodated the cost for that. And the council still chooses to include it. We can, we can figure that out later.
Other human resource enhancements on this budget, we do have a reclassification of our part time leisure services assistant position, moving that to a full time status, really having that position charged with overseeing the city event coordination. Addition of a part time social media and marketing position, again, split between the city administrator's office tourism fund. And then the addition of one police aid position, and then inclusion of additional wage capacity for DPW and dispatch to allow for pay progression. We talked about with the compensation adjustments with DPW is, you know, creating those new positions and having the ability to progress one to the next. We're still working on the assessment criteria, but wanted to include some additional wage capacities. Add on effect starting. So next, looking at the twenty twenty three capital improvement plan. So at a high level, what you see are the funding sources. So departments requested twenty three point seven million dollars, and we were able to fund about twenty one million dollars. So pretty much a large majority of the requests. Where items deviated, we'll talk a little bit more at the common council decisions. But you'll see pretty significant decrease for TID eleven and twelve. That's primarily related to the Drexel Avenue Gateway and Streetscape project. So the request for four point eight million dollars, put in there two point five million dollars. And we'll talk a little bit more about that project. And then you'll also see a TBD about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's for the purchase of a fire engine, really just need a decision from the council whether or not to proceed. Right now with the supply chain issues, it's taking twenty four to thirty months in order to get fire apparatus. So really, we're just asking the common council for a decision today on Friday, and then we'll figure it out in the next year. Cash on hand really depends on where the next budget or two outcomes lie.
So I'm really, really proud of our CIP this year and hope and think you will be too, once we get into the nitty gritty. You know, a capital campaign, if you will, of twenty three point six million dollars requested. And us being able to find a way to fund twenty one million of those without using a single general property taxpayer, single, single levied dollar is pretty awesome. You know, we have certain sources of funds that other communities don't with We Energies and things like that. But as you can see here, a lot of these major initiatives are part, very clearly part of our community strategic action plan, which we've been working in and we're revising right now and taking us into the next, you know, four to, four to five years. A lot of investment on Lake Michigan and the city's lakefront, using tax increment financing, investment in our community gateway corridor on Drexel Avenue, again, tax increment district funding with excess funds. You know, it goes down the list, but it's just really awesome to see us be able to do such meaningful projects, strategic action plan projects, and have, through the strategic use of these other funds, through the forethought and advanced planning of the common council over the last several years to begin setting up these equipment replacement and building replacement funds. You know, I liked putting this together. Max spends about ninety hours on a hundred fifty spreadsheets. And, you know, I do some things with the letter of transmittal, and don't get me wrong, I'm involved. But this is the puzzle piece I get to put together, and it's like three spreadsheets. But your management team here is always thorough in their requests and analyses in justifying these major expenses. And I think in the end, where we reduced funding from the management request to the city administrator, to BAP, and now on to common council, I think even those management department directors would say that that makes sense. So it's not anything to say or value judge on the merits of the initial request. It's just logic and funding sources sometimes intervene. And these are, a couple of these can also be incremental in nature. And maybe we get back to the ultimate goal or ultimate request, the Drexel Avenue Streetscape project, gateway project being one of those. So this is where a lot of those council decision points lie, and we want to get that common framework before the council, before heading into the budget workshop on Friday.
So the major projects that are included in the twenty twenty three CIP, you'll see about eight million dollars, plus we have a couple million grant dollars for the North Lakefront Bluff stabilization of that net. We do include two and a half million dollars for the Drexel Avenue Streetscape, Streetscape project. Really, and we're on that phase one. Two point two five million dollars for the North Lake Vista Park design, park, and then demolition of the building. Purchase of a ladder truck for the fire department, one point seven million. Road improvements, a million dollars. Purchase of a fire engine, shy of a million dollars. Starting to look at site selection, land purchase and design of Fire Station Two, seven hundred fifty thousand. And then Drexel Avenue's water lift station replacement, seven hundred. So next, I'll turn it back over to Andrew. He'll kind of walk the common council through some of the decision points that we'll be asking for your feedback on Friday.
So as you saw in the letter of transmittal, you know, we're walking through, how did this financial plan come together? And a lot of that, as I just mentioned, revolved around the CIP and using of cash available to us, one time cash, cash we have on hand that we've been diligently and purposefully squirreling away for a few years. The one, the first point is the use of our ARPA dollars. And ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act funds, major piece of legislation, once in a generation. Monies that the federal government gave to local units of government all over the nation. And our allocation of ARPA dollars originally was three point nine million, give or take. And we haven't necessarily allocated those dollars. We haven't had any conversations. But as this budget came together, we realized that the use of these ARPA dollars for larger improvements and one time purchases or one time contracts does a couple of things. First, it obviously allows us to accommodate some of our large priorities here, the ladder truck being, being a significant one of those. But it also allows us to kind of use those ARPA dollars in advance of the deadline and then have a streamlined reporting process. So for instance, if we wanted to use ARPA for a, I don't know, a continuing seating alone program for maybe small business startup, let's just use that as an example. You really can't use ARPA for that unless you're planning on popping that program into place and lending out or giving out all of that money by the end of twenty twenty four, committing that to the end of twenty twenty four. So we thought, well, let's be a little more strategic with our ARPA, streamline the reporting. And then you'll see also we'll have a million dollars of that ARPA reserved for a conversation about the council's priorities for those remaining ARPA dollars. And I'd imagine that that is something that the strategic planning workshop you will have on the seventeenth. That's a perfect venue for that. So we, in addition to purchasing the ladder truck or ordering the ladder truck, what we're suggesting we do is use ARPA for one million dollars worth of road improvements that we usually use one million dollars of cash from the We Energies mitigation fund dollars to support. We have a million in roads and a million in other capital from that We Energies relationship. And we're saying, let's use ARPA for our million dollars in roads contract. And then we'll put the money that we would otherwise use from We Energies for roads aside, and it's like a quasi ARPA without the strings of ARPA over here on the side for us to determine what we want to do. And we'll have a longer period of time to do that. So that's generally speaking, the strategy with ARPA dollars. There's also a movable vehicle barrier system we've been having a lot of conversation with, a small amount, really a pilot project to, to help make our event spaces a little more safe. And we can, we can definitely talk about, more about that on, on Friday as well. But that's typically, that's the gist of how we wanted to use ARPA here. And we wanted to make sure the council was comfortable because, you know, we haven't had a lot of those council conversations or community conversations that other communities are undertaking to determine what the priorities are. But we certainly think the ladder truck is a significant priority. So in that same vein, we've also established over the last three to four years, replacement funds for building improvements as well as vehicle replacements. We're proposing using Oh, the ambulance purchase. Okay. I was gonna say, this should be five thirty one or something like that, or five hundred and one thousand, but the ambulance purchase is in here. So we're proposing using eight hundred and eighty one thousand dollars of cash on hand. Three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that is the ambulance purchase out of the EMS fund that Max had mentioned. That leaves five hundred and one thousand remaining of that eight eighty one. And we're proposing to use funds in the equipment replacement fund and the building improvement reserve to handle these items. And we're very confident in doing that because at the end of this year, we project that the general fund will have a balance, and we can replenish those funds just like we did this past year. So bear with me, at the end of, in this current operating budget, we use cash on hand to the degree of X. Well, with fiscal year ending twenty twenty one, general fund surplus, we replenished those two sinking funds back to their million dollar base. And we really feel confident that we can do that, although we're using a half a million dollars in cash on hand to, from those two funds. And then again, the ambulance purchase is a separate fund. So a lot of, a lot of good things, a lot of needs. I mean, a snowplow dump truck, we're, you know, probably in the, in the mode of replacing that once, you know, one of those every year at this point. You know, the other costs really smaller, but, but certainly add up when you look at building improvements and some pieces of equipment that are outdated. I think if I remember correctly, our forklift was from like nineteen sixty seven, it's a nineteen sixty seven model forklift. So future funding, funding of the fire engine, we, we had mentioned this certainly earlier. We determined as a recommendation to the council that this is a major priority along with the ladder truck. However, we just don't have the luxury to say, well, we'll come back to it again next budget and see if we can fund it fully with, you know, the budgetary dollars or the cash or whatever the case may be. So we're saying, let Chief Kressig order that apparatus. We'll have two, at least two budgets very likely to determine how we can fund this, whether we have accrued cash at that point or what, what's probably more likely is when we're getting to the point of buying some property for that Fire Station Two replacement or maybe a very, a different project in a tax increment district or something. We can, we can essentially add that principal cost of that fire engine onto a piece of, a piece of that down the road as a worst case scenario if we cannot accrue cash or identify a different funding source between now and then. But certainly, it's critical to get the thing manufactured at this point. Otherwise, we're just twenty four to thirty months out from wherever, whenever we decide that. It does not look like that's getting any swifter anytime soon. So this will be something we talk about a little later on the agenda. This budget plan, this financial plan pivots away from the construction of an Aben Shyne Park Pavilion in twenty twenty three and moves to really emphasizing and focusing on the infrastructure that we know is required of that park, given how we want to program it in the future. And that really revolves around the parking lot expansion, which we're receiving partnership with MMSD to, to help offset those costs and then enhancement to the entrance road. So if we're really gonna program that even more actively than it is with the disc golf that we have out there, with the cricket, with the skate park, with all the things going on at Aben Shyne, we're adding into that a potential, you know, beer garden, seasonal beer garden or something along those lines. We thought, you know, we need to pull back on those bids, as you saw in the next agenda item or a couple of agenda items down. That's not rational. So we thought, let's, let's pull back and as we're, but as we're regrouping on a redesign or whatever the next steps may be, let's put that infrastructure in place. Because we really, we were setting ourselves up for, you know, hurrying and rushing construction of a, of a pavilion and then figuring out in season one, season two, season three, these infrastructure needs. So this is probably a more logical process for, you know, moving forward while we're looking at what is the next step, the council's desire on that pavilion structure in that, in that park. So the Drexel Streetscape, a very similar tale. All phases, budget requests for the, for the scope of this gateway project spanning from essentially South IKEA Way all the way to Howell Avenue, coming in at four point eight million. We, we did not find it rational to ask the council to produce a four point eight million dollar Streetscape on Drexel Avenue. We know that it is a significant gateway to our community. We know we want to do something very special there. However, the scope of that and really looking at the elements and I would say really the scope in terms of the span all the way from South IKEA Way entirely to Howell Avenue was a little bit. We, our eyes were a little bit big on that. And what we, we think we can do utilizing TID eleven and TID twelve funding is borrow certain elements, not cheapen the overall design, but maybe incorporate various elements that we like and do something more intensive at the beginning of that gateway around South IKEA Way, around Thirteenth Street, taper that into the railroad overpass, maybe to Drexel Town Square, and then take an incremental approach to how we would want to add on to that over time. Again, and as funding allows. So again, we talk about this, and, and this is just setting up a, a future conversation. You know, there, there are always needs and justifiably so requests from the police and fire chief to add, you know, police officers on the streets or firefighter EMS folks into the stations and on the streets. And of course, given levy constraints and, and revenue constraints, along with the thoughtful decisions to invest in workforce otherwise with our existing workforce and those compensation adjustments, we really didn't have any room at this point in the budget, or really at any point in the budget, to add police and fire FTE personnel to this budget. However, we talk about this every year, we need and are requesting, we will, as much as we can demand anything out of you, council, we will, we will do our best to get in our strategic planning workshops, what you feel is a decent target for us to begin building a financial plan around. Uh, whatever, whatever that may be. And that answer, as, as elected officials could say, you know, right now, we're very happy with, with where we're at. You know, that's not our answer, and we'll talk through that. Uh, as a staff, we don't, we don't, we would never recommend that to you, that we're good where we're at. Um, but we, we definitely want to get, have some focused conversation on that and, and, and get a target from you as elected officials on where we want to go with public, public safety resources moving forward in this five-year plan that is our next strategic plan. Yeah, I probably won't uh try to fumble through this one. Max, if you want to give us a little tutorial on the ERP program.
So the expenditure restraint program commonly for the ERP uh provides unrestricted aid to municipalities. At your growth and spending. Uh, if you spend over, under a certain threshold, the state gives you some. A municipality qualifies for ERP payment really twofold. One, your equalized tax rate has to be at least five mils. Um, and then secondly, your budget uh from one year to the next can only grow at an inflation factor. That inflation factor is sixty percent of your net new construction plus inflation from August to August of each year. What we wanted to bring to the council's attention is that, you know, given the growth we're realizing in the community, our equalized property tax rate what we're forecasting is that for our twenty twenty-three budget, uh, you'll see kind of circle it with my mouse here, our TID out tax rate, equalized tax rate is about five point eight nine mils. Um, and you can see that's resulting about thirty thousand dollar reduction in our expenditure restraint payment. Um, and then what you'll see is that for our twenty twenty-four budget, uh, we're projecting that to decrease about a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Uh, twenty twenty-five budget, sixty-six thousand, and then ultimately our twenty twenty-six budget, we wouldn't qualify because our tax rate would be under five mils. The variables for the twenty twenty-four budget are, are already set. You know, our tax rate here is based off of the levy that we proposed. We have our equalized value known as well. So um, what we're seeing is that our tax rate continues to drop because when your tax levy is only going up two and a half percent, but your community value is going up thirteen, fourteen percent, it's pretty significant drops in that tax, tax rate. This, this is gonna sound ridiculous, but the decision point for the council is if we want to continue to qualify for this program, we try and take a debt levy exemption or something to increase taxes to keep our tax rate above five. And again, it sounds ridiculous because the name of the program is expenditure restraint. The only way we can continue to qualify is if we increase taxes to do so. So again, another one of those uh programs from the state that seems very.
So this is a good example. Um, I mean, I should have mentioned this in the last slide. We were talking about public safety, you know, heading into the budget. Um, my priority, talking through with Max, knowing we needed to get your guidance and strategic action plan conversations on public safety generally. Um, my goal was to kind of balance this budget, handle the compensation adjustments and, and round out that last fire shift with one additional firefighter EMS. Uh, and, and that was, that was within, that was within range. And then in the waning stages of this budget, we received a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in our WRS costs and a thirty thousand dollar decrease in expenditure restraint. That's your person. That's your FTE. One of those that are completely outside of our control uh by and large, specifically the expenditure restraint. So what this is, what this illustrates here is, you know, Max and, and he's taken this very seriously, this multi-year budget approach that's in your strategic plan. We can say as best we can, we can look at these programs, we can look at the general transportation aid, we can look at expenditure restraint and say, hey, here's where it looks good and here's where, where it doesn't look so good. So these are not budgetary surprises that happen to us in the fall. There's certain things we can't project, you know, doing actuariales for WRS is, you know, not what, what we get paid. So that was a surprise. Um, but certain things we can, you know, like the utility uh mitigation, uh, the utility revenue that we have already plotted out for the next decade. Um, this is just really good work um that helps us have a better uh, I guess less volatile budget from year to year, especially knowing we're only allowed to increase our property tax levy limit by net new construction. So just a good illustration of what we do behind the scenes, uh, what Max specifically does behind the scenes.
Uh, and then really the last decision point for the common council stormwater fee. So the current budget or the proposed twenty twenty-three budget keeps it at thirty-nine dollars per ERU. Uh, that CI, CIP does include a pretty significant stormwater project, which is the Drexel Avenue Stormwater Lift Station, seven hundred ten thousand dollars. Uh, so kind of looking at the long-range plan for the stormwater utility, we don't have the cash on hand today to pay for it. So we anticipate uh doing this as a debt issuance in the winter, wrapping it up with another debt issuance. Uh, and based off of those projections, uh, we could do it as a debt issuance amortized over ten years. So wouldn't need an increase in that stormwater fee. Um, just realize development activity that's, that's grown that revenue. So uh, you can see here, you can see on the twenty twenty-three budget, ending reserve position about seven hundred thousand, eight, eight hundred thousand. And then if we issued debt, I layered in the debt service payments twenty-four through twenty-six. You see pretty, pretty fairly break even. Uh, it allows us to also continue our existing uh capital program about two hundred thirty thousand. So really just wanted to make the council aware that even though we have a large stormwater project, it can be funded within the existing, existing ERU rate uh based off of. That, I think Andrew and I are happy to answer any questions the common council have tonight. Otherwise, uh, look forward to our conversation on Friday.
If I could, Ken, just, you know, this is all problem solving and puzzle making every year. There's variable, varia- variables, inputs and outputs, pros and cons of each budget outlook. You know, revenues and expenditures all float together. You know, when it all comes to us, it's, it's, you know, our job, you know, in administration to kind of distill all that and, and obviously we have to have a balanced budget in the state of Wisconsin, so give you a balanced, balanced budget proposal. But really show how we did it. And that work starts with a lot of work of the department staff, the, the division managers crunching numbers, providing analysis, thinking ahead. Uh, and you know, we get a product from them and it's, it's generally a very, very good product with which to work from, uh, from which to work. So I wanted to thank everybody who had a hand in this budget. Uh, the management team, the, the help that they had with their middle managers and, and other staff uh, and Max. Um, you know, this is only Max's second budget, is it? So, um, you know, there's a lot of analysis that he's put together that positions us to, to think, you know, a few years down the road. Um, and it's a lot of work, tens and tens of hours of work. Um, and, you know, Max loves it. So I'm sure he, we, we like to show our work here and, and lead you through these conversations moving forward. So thank you, Max.
Guys, any questions, input? Got a big day on Friday. Hopefully, uh, organized and efficient.
Uh, Mike Kressig, representing Fire Department. So there, per the CIP, there were three options with that vehicle, no cash upfront, uh, chassis payment about midway through, and then payment upon receipt. Our interactions with Pierce right now do not indicate that there is any money upfront. I would caution, um, that, that deserves a little bit more vetting as we go along because certainly I think uh, one thing to be aware of is the price increases have been frequent. And it, to be able to lock in at a certain price may require some outlay of cash.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll be, be able to be nimble there. Um, the large apparatus that we would be ordering are, uh, the fire, the fire, excuse me, the ladder truck. Um, that's ARPA dollars. We're working with our auditors right now if this were to move forward or you, we get a general consensus from you on Friday. Uh, how they want to, us to, to do that, because typically you want to receive the asset in the year you outlay the money or, you know, pay for cash when you get it. Um, with that long delay, it's a little odd to be putting that cash out to have that five or seven percent discount um, and then not receive the asset for thirty months. So we're, we're, we're working with that. Um, and then the fire engine's really the same thing. If we had to find monies for a down payment, that would be, i- if we were to say borrow for that uh fire engine, we, we would just replenish the five or ten percent that we put down upon receiving those debt proceeds.
I just wanted to offer to Max and we do really appreciate the fact that we're early and robust. You know, years past when I first served it, relatively late in the game, you got this kind of information. Really appreciate the fact that we've taken this seriously, the long-term cash forecasting and budgetary forecasting, we, we really wanted to take a look at in the last SAP cycle. So really appreciate the effort you guys. You know, some of us, actually three of us sat on CIP. So, you know, Greg and Steve are a little kind of curve on that, but I know it was a CIP a budget stuff was in one of the SAP, Andrew's same page reports. But I think we're well-prepped for Friday and hopefully can really focus on what matters and get on with business and do a great thing for the community.
Sorry, sorry, Ken. I always, I always like to have you have the last word, but, um, you know, me, I talk a lot. So the, the, just to prepare for Friday, what we hope to get out of Friday is obviously hit those decision points, make sure everybody's you know, singing from the same hymn book, if you will, on, okay, that makes sense. You know, I'm not very comfortable with that, whatever the case may be. Uh, but also you'll see in your budget binder that should have been in your mailboxes. Um, that is as close to our comprehensive budget document as we've ever had at this stage in the game. So there's goals in there. There's management initiatives. There's performance measurements for each of the departments and divisions in the city. Really spend some time to, to, to get through those and develop any questions you have, because the fruitful part of the day, after we get through the, kind of the hurdles that we have to jump over to get a budget uh to, to public hearing is hearing from our department directors and having a dialogue with the elected officials to, to see how things are going. Talk about stressors, stressors, talk, talk about important initiatives for next year, things they're wrapping up this year. We hope you take advantage of that time. Otherwise, um, you know, maybe it would be a real short day if we didn't use our time together um efficiently and wisely in that way. And you don't get that a lot. We don't get a lot of face time uh with the management staff and the elected officials. So we would appreciate that.
Item number six, then we will move on then to uh PD. Item number seven then is considered resolution approving the Greenfield Police Department's Digital Forensic Task Force Memorandum of Understanding. Welcome, David.
Good evening, council. Dave Stecker, police chief. I'm not sure if we had a chance to look at everything, and when we get into the technical, technical aspects, I'm gonna try and keep this out of the weeds and a little bit more at the higher level. So Greenfield Police Department uh created a digital forensic lab and basically allowed for people to come in to be a part of this task force. Uh, the MOU that I am asking you guys to consider and recommend that you approve would give us access to that. The big part of this is that there's a lot of financials that go into building this type of structure and then maintaining it year after year. We do have some of the items that they have that we can still do by us, but the big thing is basically breaking into phones or laptops or tablets when we have it locked. And the big thing that I'm sure everyone's aware is, we've discussed this a couple of times before, we've had a Celebrite machine that we were approved for several years ago. The use of electronic devices in crimes is just increasing every single time. So there's usually some sort of data that's in there that we can use. The problem isn't when people give us access and the code to get into it. It's when we need to get a warrant to get in there and they're not allowing us that code and we have to get this uh information to them. So we have the people that are educated and trained that can use this equipment. We just don't have it. This is one of those shared type items that's a little bit more feasible. If somebody in the area has it, and we can all share off of it. The long and short of it is costs about eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars just to get up and running on what they are, plus the annual licensing, which would be about sixty thousand dollars if we were to do this alone. They're allowing for several departments in the area to come onto this via an MOU to use it twenty-four, seven for the cost of four thousand dollars a year. The value that we get out of this is just outrageous and they're obviously subsidizing the other part of it. We would have access for two of our detectives twenty-four, seven, whenever they need to, to go in and work on these devices and then bring them back. It's a lot better than our current option, which is we have to either take them to the Milwaukee County DA's investigators and they're backlogged on this and get into a queue, if you will, to get each one processed or run them out to the state crime lab in Madison and also get into a queue and have these worked on. Both take my detectives away from the time that they should be investigating items and not being close to be able to work on items here in the area. I would be more than happy to answer any specific questions that you may have in regards to this, but it is a, it's a huge beneficial item for us to be able to use. Uh, if we, once we get this approved, we would have the rest of twenty twenty-two as no fee. We'd start paying in twenty-three. That will come out of the budget that I already have. I will have to find those funds and cut other places and shift items. Continuing into twenty twenty-four, that'll be a different discussion that we'll have to have. If we're gonna continue doing this, what's the value and where we're gonna come up with those monies from in the budget? It's continually renewable unless acted upon either party to separate that if there's a change to it. Uh, currently, right now, there's, I believe, six or eight others that are, six that I believe are using it and another two besides Oak Creek that are struggling considering this. There isn't the problem with who's gonna be in there. There's not just one computer. There's multiple computer stations. So multiple people could be in there at the same time. Um, I think the other thing that goes into this is when they're looking at that continual licensing every year, as long as they have about ten of us in there to twelve of us at four thousand dollars apiece, that's helping offset the majority of that.
Steve. Um, chief, uh, having dabbled in uh computer forensics in my, my prior life as a federal agent, I can tell you that having in-house forensics is really sweet. And if you can't afford to have it, having to have gone to Milwaukee County or the state just bogs down investigation. So if there's something like this, I think it's a slam dunk. I mean, it'd be nice to have your own forensic person to do your own forensic work, but can't afford that.
So we do have our own forensic people. They will be doing the work on it.
Right.
We have some of the equipment by us that has been approved and we will continue using that. It's just when we have to break into these devices. We don't have that. And they do have some extra technology that we don't. So being able to leverage that and their sharing and being good neighbors is a, it's a fantastic opportunity.
Yeah, this is, this is slam dunk. So, good idea.
Um, I'm just looking at a couple of the, the software things have in parentheses. Um, one of them says thirty advanced unlocks, one says thirty-five advanced unlocks. Do those software programs have a finite number of times they can be used? Is this any type of incremental costs that you would incur or is it four thousand regardless of how much?
Four thousand right now regardless of what we use.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, no, there's a no brainer. David, I had, um, just from the other side of this, I just look at from a constitutional.
Sure.
Obviously, there's some significant issues with this level investigation. So how is the management of the scope of the search and the search warrant and management of that process and retention of the records?
So we have all that in place currently and we've worked with IT uh and using the best practices from the Secret Service are the ones that put all this together and are constantly developing these. Uh, we do have, and this was part of what some of those DOJ grant monies were used for, separate server space. Um, because unfortunately, this isn't just normal crimes that we're dealing with. Sometimes this deals with underage people that we need to make sure that. dealing with, sometimes this deals with underage people that we need to make sure that there's separated images and how we maintain those things separate from everything else. Now, when it comes to the constitutional aspects on it, we can only get into a phone one of two ways. You're allowing us via consent, or we're obtaining a search warrant for it, understanding what it is that we're looking for, and then that's what we search for. Uh, the nice thing about most digital evidence, number one is that it's usually segmented or separated by what it is that we're looking for, and that's what our search is for, and these programs actually track all of that, and when you have a file or a report at the end, it explains exactly what we searched for and what we found. It also keeps a copy of that electronically, so we can go back and reproduce that. But just like a search warrant on a house where we're looking for maybe guns that are stolen and we conduct a search warrant and now we find drugs, that's now a fruit of what we were able to legally go in and obtain. So, there are gonna be times that we're in there and we're looking for something and we come across something else that would be a crime that we need to investigate separately.
You're seeking your search warrant necessarily before our local judges or county judge?
Most everything we're doing through the county.
And we locally supervise the, uh, the searches and the, and the retention of that?
Yes.
That's all in our purview?
Correct.
That's all I really had to say.
Sure.
Anybody else? We'll look for, uh, motion on item number seven then.
Kerkowski make a motion to, uh, approve resolution number one, two, three, five, six, dash, one, zero, zero, four, two, two, approving the Greenfield Police Department Digital Forensic Task Force Memorandum of Understanding.
Clark seconds.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Great. Moving on, engineering, item number eight is consider a motion to reject the bids received for the AbenShine Park Pavilion project and direct staff to explore alternative design options.
Evening, Council, Matt Sullivan, City Engineer. Um, before you, we have a motion to consider rejection, rejecting the bids for AbenShine Park Pavilion. Um, give you a little background history, back in two thousand nineteen, the AbenShine Park Master Plan was adopted by the Common Council, and that included, um, a structured pavilion, more open air shelter. Um, in two thousand and twenty-one, um, the city did hire Plunkett and Raisers Architects to start designing a pavilion structure through many of the meetings that we conducted with Parks and Rec and the Ad Hoc Committee, that included, um, engineering, some staff, alderpersons, citizens. Scope of the project kind of increased and, and, and ballooned to a, a larger scale, project which included not an open-air shelter, but more of a closed shelter that could be used for seasons and rentable, or used by a proprietary type. So, as we're going through this, um, you know, we, we identified the scope increasing and, and costs, so, through that, we started to look at options on how we could manage that budget and that increase. And one of them was, um, as Andrew mentioned, we secured a green infrastructure grant through MMSP, which provided up to nine hundred thousand dollars for the permeable favors parking lot expansion, um, that was a full reimbursable, brought the money, get it reimbursed after the product's done. Um, the other options we looked at were having alternate bids, in hopes that we'd be able to cherry pick and, and try to stay within our budget. One of the issues that we did see through the bidding process was obviously materials, labors, construction, costs have increased significantly as, as we're seeing throughout most of our bidding process that we've been going through and receiving bids throughout the year. So, um, we received four bids, um, the lowest being four point five million, um, which was significantly over our budget, which I believe at one point was at three point one after the increased, uh, requests. Um, what we're asking is that the bids be rejected based on the significant increase, funds be used in different measures. Here for any questions if you got them?
Um, Matt, are you gonna, with regards to the, um, alternative design options, do you have any ideas on future meetings or any, uh, groups getting together to try and come up with, uh, something else?
I, I think at this point, it's, it's kind of an open air, or, you know, kind of open-ended, um, I, I believe we're probably gonna go back to Parks and Rec mission, there will probably be some kind of staff, and I think Andrew is probably gonna speak on this a little bit more, but it, it's probably gonna, it's not gonna be just staff, but I think, I think we'll probably use the same thing, but kind of refocus on what we intend to be.
If I may, Alderman, you know, a lot of, you know, early on, the prevailing thought was this is a little bit of scope creep, and I'll, I'll take that, um, you know, in trying to design a building that had utility for seasons out of each year, and, and not designing this to be a beer garden structure, and, and again, having some value in the winter months, um, that certainly added to, um, to the scope of it. And, and we were looking at, Matt mentioned it, it was about three million dollars, we're like, okay, we can cobble together some funds using some ARPA dollars, park impact fees are very strong, you know, this is the building that, you know, w- we think would be, we'd be very proud of there. And the, the, so the scope, taking us to maybe a three million dollar building, which we were confident we could get bids in that realm of the realistic, coming back at four point five to four point nine million was a little bit of a shot. It kind of hit us, all of the global issues and, and, and material issues and, and, and all of the things we see our development community struggling with, it kind of, this is a perfect example of why we were in their shoes for once, and talk a little bit about that later on too, but, uh, again, I know Mayor Dan feels very strongly about taking a look at this, making this a community-based project, um, saving some costs there. I know, I know he wants to be a part of that, um, very intimately a part of that redesign process, but we are a little bit back to square one on just regrouping at this point, and the first step in order for us to be able to do that is to reject the bids.
Thank you.
Yeah, great.
So, I've been to, I guess, numerous beer gardens, as well as other public amenities in some surrounding communities, and I, I've started to notice a lot of them seem to be sponsored and have some type of corporate sponsorship, um, and, and most of them not in any type of gaudy way, just small signage or something. Um, has that ever been looked at, or is that something that could be feasible to be done at a place like AbenShine?
So, we had some discussions on that and, early on, and, and, uh, with a smaller group of, of our team, and we, we hoped we wouldn't have to do that, to be honest with you, because, you know, I don't know that we want the, you know, the Axe Grocery, Grocery Store Pavilion Beer Garden, um, there's a strong brand, if you recall, of the potential beer garden operator we were working with, a proprietary, uh, business that we were looking to partner with. You know, I personally hope we don't have to go that route in any meaningful way, you know, like you said, big and gaudy, but certainly, um, you know, I think if, if Mayor Dan would here, would be here, he would be like, let's maybe have some things along the way in terms of materials and, and, and labor and, and make it a tutorial event and a community engagement process, um, more so than, you know, having somebody buy a, buy us, you know, to put their name on it. Uh, but maybe it's a combination of those items. Uh, and I don't know exactly what Mayor Dan's vision is for this, but, um, you know, we're, again, we'll regroup and plot out a course of action for your consideration.
I, I think, Andrea, I think the primary focus after we expected here, scoping on this, is really the most, is the community feature, being functional, heard of, AbenShine means have a community scoping focused on. You know, this, this thing went through this kind of utility creep or usefulness creep, but really, we're gonna reject what we have here, we really need to refocus on what it actually serves. Really, you know, can't be, one, you gotta really focus on, you gotta winnowing that now, search the utility, search the function, what that function really is.
No, great, so, so, yeah, um, a great starting point for that is the original s- concept in the two thousand nineteen AbenShine Park Master Plan, which was vetted out by the public, by the Parks and Recreation Commission, maybe another group, and then ultimately the Common Council. You know, that is really, I think, if we go back and maybe use that as a starting point, is, is more in line with that open-air, for the most part, uh, community pavilion structure that you see, not a rentable banquet hall, um, a small, as small as it is. Um, so, I think we start back there and, and see what's still, uh, validated and, and desire, desirous of that, of that concept.
That's more, more logical place to start than just.
Yes.
All right, we need the action though on item number.
All right, Kerkowski, make a motion to reject the bids received for the AbenShine Park Pavilion project and direct the staff to explore alternative design options.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Great, thanks. Uh, moving on, Public Works in Utility, item number nine is considered a motion to approve a project award for the Forest Hill Manor Water Relay to Volcom in the amount of seven hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars, fifty cents, to amend the two thousand twenty-two capital improvement budget by two hundred thousand dollars. Brian?
Good evening, Brian Johnson, Utility, um, looking at replacing about, uh, just short of a half mile of eight-inch water main in Central City, so Verdeve, Valbeth, and Griffin. Um, this project was bid out earlier in April, and we rejected all those bids, they came in significantly higher, a little bit at that time was eight sixty-six and change, so about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars cheaper the second time we bid this out. Prices are looking good, it's still over our budget, so we are requesting another two hundred thousand dollars to add on to the seven hundred that we had originally budgeted for this project. Um, it does help us get rid of some of our nineteen sixty-two cast iron water main, some of the older water main that we have in the city, so we make that go away, and we've had thirty-one breaks on this section, um, throughout the life of that, so. It's been a, a problem child for us and a problem area for us with, uh, breaks and interruptions over there, so. Big concern for us with this is with the Howell Avenue project being done, um, increased water pressure and water flow with the, the new pipeline out there, can cause additional breaks in areas that don't have as strong a pipe, so worried about if we place Howell, that this is gonna be an issue for us in the future, so rather get ahead of it. Um, project timing-wise, this is gonna be constructed next year, so Howell and this project will be under construction probably around the same time. Be a traffic nightmare and construction nightmare in that area.
Yeah. No, I mean, I've had no input from, for district residents in regard to this.
It doesn't need to be done at the same time, it's just timing of it. Um, the Howell project was supposed to be done last year, and that's just been pushed back, so Howell's the one that's causing our issue right now, so. I don't have my crystal ball, um, you know, these prices came down since April, so I don't know what next year's gonna bring. Um, we're still looking at four-to-six month lead time for materials, so.
You look like you have something on your mind. Who's?
Nothing.
All right, Brian, I don't see, in these neighborhoods, I've received remediation of Apache, it also goes, it doesn't look like it's a place to tour.
Yes.
So.
And because of what's out there currently, you have sanitary storm sewer water main, you run out of space in the road, so.
This is going down the middle of the road, isn't it?
No, it's not. Um, it varies where it's going to end up. Um, part of it is gonna be directionally drilled, and it's gonna be in the terrace, so it's going to be going underneath some of the big trees that are out there, um, just to try and minimize, and so we have a spot to put it, because there's not spot in the road. Um, some of it's going into the actual roadway, we're just flipping the side of the road that it's on. Um, with this project, we are looking at doing the, the trench at this time, and then working with engineering and having that part of the, the road project for next year, and replacing the mill and overlay on that road as well.
All I have. Sorry, Rich. Um, I, I don't recall seeing that in some documentation. Do you have the capacity to additional?
Yes, we do.
All right, then I'll take a motion on item number nine.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Great, next is License Committee, I'll turn that over to Alderman Kerkowski.
Thank you, Ken, uh, trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the extensive list of people on the Common Council report, uh, tonight. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, Kerkowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the October fourth, two thousand twenty-two License Committee report.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Moving on to item eleven is vendor summary. We will consider motion to approve the twenty, September twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-two vendor summary report. Questions, concerns, I guess, Max? Anything from you guys? All right, motion on eleven.
Clark seconds.
Uh, roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Oh, no. Yeah, hang on one second. Then we'll move on to, uh, item number twelve then, is consider motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes discussed the following, A, section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub B, discuss a possible amendment to the tax incremental District Number Thirteen Finance Development Agreement for the Lakeshore Commons Development, B, section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub E, N G, to consider the subrogation claim of Erie Insurance on behalf of the insured Eric Stott regarding a January five, two thousand twenty-two automobile accident involving a city vehicle, and C, section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub E, to consider purchase of tilgroom in the city Volk Creek and Fifth Property LLC regarding approximately two point six-six acres located at forty-three oh-one East Depot Road.
Guzekowski, second.
No, that's not a motion, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. Guzekowski, second.
Great, roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Okay.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item number fourteen then is, take the motion on, item number B.
Clark moves to approve payment of the Erie Insurance subrogation claim in the amount of ten thousand four. of ten thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents on behalf of their insured Eric Stat with a full settlement and release of all claims.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Move on to fifteen, consider resolution approving Oak Creek and Fifth Properties LLC.
Clark, Clark moves to adopt Resolution Number One Two Three Five Seven Dash One Zero Zero Four Two Two, Resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement between the city vote Creek and Fifth Property LLC.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Great, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Clark moves to adjourn.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Great, thank you.